Evening, it's 6:00 on December 12, 2023, and I'll call the board meeting at the Glen County Board of Education to order. Our first order of business is the invocation and pledge by Mr. Edgy tonight.
Please stand, raise your hands. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for another beautiful day in the Golden Isles. Thank you for our teachers, administrators, and staff. We ask that you be with all of our students and families as we approach this holiday season, and keep everyone safe. Also, if you'd be with us board as we make decisions, then thank all children of this community. We ask these things of your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Glad you lead the transition to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for what we stand as, one nation under God, invisible with liberty, peace, love, and sorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Edgy. All right, so we have our spotlight from the Dozier.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Technical difficulty. All right, State Superintendent Richard Woods recently released the 2022-23 List of Distinguished and Rewards Schools, recognizing some of the very best public schools in the state. CB Greer Elementary, St. Simon's Elementary, and Glen Middle are among 154 schools recognized as distinguished schools for significant academic achievement. This designation recognizes the highest performing Title I schools in Georgia, so please join me in recognizing them for this honor.
Awesome.
The team comprised of Ms. Marie Fiesel and Mrs. Kathy Pittman was recently selected as the 2023 Georgia Social Studies Program of Excellence Award winner for their contribution to quality social studies instruction. Tonight, they are here to share some of their favorite moments of this program and to, as we celebrate this well-deserved honor.
Well, good evening, we're back. Season two of History Happens Here. We are so thrilled to be here tonight to share with you an honor we received on behalf of Glen County Schools for our Program of Excellence. We take a, oh, there's another video, get excited. We take elementary school and this year, middle school teachers around the Golden Isles, and we teach them about our local history and how to make those applications to the larger story of Georgia studies and also United States history. We're hoping to expand into the high schools. Hint, but that's okay, you know, we'll talk about that later. But anyhow, one of the unique features of this year's program, we seem to have a lot of family connections. So every time we went to a location, we would find a teacher who had a family member affiliated with that, like at the Harrington School or at the, what was that? The Coastal Georgia Historical Society's, or more, Memorial. So we're real thrilled about that, and so we'll let you take it away. What happened to sound? There will sound.
joining with us, join us tonight, but we would like to present the award to the district because it is a district award. Georgia Council of Social Studies gives out any number each year, but this year, they only gave two. They awarded this one and one to Georgia Southern University for Best Programming, so we'd like to leave this with you and...
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank y'all for your work in putting this together and making history come alive here.
We're looking forward to season three.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it too. It is so much fun.
Yeah, you should join us.
Who knew there were that many places locally?
What's so thrilling is how much our local community reaches out and supports us. Many of our local partners here in Glen County did not charge us any admission fees and also were willing to actually provide us lunch some days. So it was, you know, it was so great to see that local partnership come alive, so it was just, you know, really great to be a part of all that.
Yes, thank y'all.
So I got two questions. One statement, Ms. Pittman, did we talk about Pearl Harbor on December 7th in our schools?
Yes.
Got that, and I will say that US history is far more important than trigonometry, so, how about that?
Is this recorded, bro?
Yes, it is.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all very much.
Last year, six members of the Glen Academy FBLA chapter were named national winners, including one student who was named the Georgia FBLA State President. It was also the first time in 16 years that Glen Academy was represented at Nationals. Tonight, Mrs. Beal and several of her FBLA members will discuss some of their achievements this past school year and the campaigns they have planned this school year.
My name's Olivia Gerald, and I currently serve as the 2023 to 2024 Georgia FBLA State President.
My name is Sarah Jane Beal, I'm Glen Academy Chapter's President.
I'm Lexi Beal, I'm our Chapter's Communication Vice President.
I'm Katie Higson, and I'm our Chapter's Vice President.
My name is Taryn, and I'm our Chapter's Student Leader.
And today, we're here to tell you a little bit about our chapter and our organization. So you may be wondering, what exactly is FBLA? Well, FBLA stands for Future Business Leaders of America, and it's the largest student-led organization in the nation, with Georgia FBLA being the large state, largest state chapter. We have over 25,000 students involved. Next slide, please. FBLA stands on three pillars, the first one being service. We desire to serve both the school and our community. So for example, school service projects like Tools for School, the Goodwill Service Drive, Toys for Tots, so many of them that we do. And then, community service projects like the Goodwill Stuff the Truck Challenge and events partnering with Bounce It Out, and again, so many more. Next slide, please. Secondly, is education. This is the symbolic idea that education is the right of every individual. FBLA uses educational activities, competitions, workshops, and more to increase members' knowledge on various business careers and things that they can get involved with outside of school. Next slide, please. And lastly, progress. We desire to prepare our members for their transition from school to work, like said before. Next slide, please. The overall mission is to bring business and education together in a positive working relationship through leadership and career development programs. So why Glen Academy FBLA? Next slide, please.
Our chapter was chartered on December 13, 1956, and has a history of being a strong chapter, but in recent years, has not been successful at recruiting active members. However, thanks to new leadership, the Glen Academy chapter is now seeing new life. The chart shows our membership growth since 2020. We have also grown in conference attendance and currently have over 300 hours of community service within our chapter. Next slide, please. Our one highlight story this semester is the Third Annual Canned Food Classic. This challenge was started as a friendly competition with Brunswick High FBLA to restock the shelves of our local food banks to restore the shelves, to restore food before the holidays. This was a collaborative effort from our members, students, staff, other clubs, local businesses, and feeder schools that all contributed to our FBLA chapter. This year, our chapter collected 4,742 cans with a grand total of 10,752 cans over the past three years. Next slide. FBLA members not only can build their resume with community service, but competitions as well. Glen Academy FBLA has established a new reputation for success, of success. Last year, we had 50 top 10 region wins, which led us to our Region III Sweepstake Trophy. At state, we had 21 top 10 finishes, with 18 of those qualified for Nationals, which is the largest number in our chapter history. Leading to the end of the year, we had two national winners, one in Sports and Entertainment Management and the other in Help Desk. Next slide, please. That's right, we are on the right track to increase those numbers this year with our successful competition kickoff at the Fall Leadership Conference. We, first place in broadcast journalism, first place in business ethics, third place in client service, sixth in impromptu, first in introduction to social media strategies, and first in social media strategies. Next slide, please. FBLA is going places. One of the many perks of being in FBLA are the conference locations and travel opportunities. This year, our chapter has attended conferences in Perry, Athens, and our officer team was invited to join Georgia FBLA's Business and Leadership Conference of New York. In the spring, we will have our region and state competition, followed by our National Leadership Conference in Orlando, Florida. Next slide, please. Chicago, Atlanta, and New York are just some of our many places we've attended in the past three years. Pictured here are some of our chapter experiences while traveling with FBLA. Next slide, please. FBLA's mission is to connect, is met by having members volunteer at business events and business representatives as guest speakers at our chapter meetings and judges at competitions. Businesses can also support us through our annual FBLA Business Sponsorship Drive. The following are local businesses that have supported our chapter this year. Next slide. Our bronze level sponsors? Next slide. Our silver level sponsors? Next slide. And our gold level sponsors. It would not be the chapter we are today without our local business support. Next slide, please.
This upcoming January is the next conference our chapter will be attending, so Glen Academy, for the first time ever, will be hosting the Region III Leadership Conference in January, and we're currently looking for business professionals to judge our 10 competitive events. So if you're interested and you want to see our members in action, please contact our Region III Advisor, Mrs. Erica Beal, or you can use this QR code displayed on the screen to sign up for that. Next slide, please. Again, we want to thank you so much, and we are enlivened by the growth and success of our chapter, and we are ready to explore more with FBLA. Thank you so much for your time, we'll gladly answer any questions you may have about our chapter.
I'd just like to say thank y'all for coming out and meeting with us tonight and explaining all that you've done and how the chapter has grown, and I know that you know this, I know Ms. Beal knows this. Y'all are learning things in school, but you're learning even more life experiences through FBLA, so thank you for being a part of that and taking extra time out of your schedule to participate.
You too, thank you.
Well done, well done.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you to all of our Spotlight attendees. That takes us to the next portion of our agenda. Citizens address the board. So before I move further, I'll read the preamble. The Board of Education has adopted a policy that permits citizens under certain circumstances to address the board on a variety of topics of general concern to the operation of our schools. We welcome visitors to board meetings and are interested in hearing from the taxpayers and patrons of the school system. Board members will not respond at this meeting to comments or questions from speakers or make immediate decisions. Board members can, contact information can be found on the Glen County website. We have established a few simple rules for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board must sign a roster before the meeting begins. Each person is limited to five minutes, and the public comment portion of the meeting shall not exceed 30 minutes. Any citizen who has a specific complaint involving an employee must first address the issue with the superintendent, and if not resolved, then may request to speak with the board. However, certain matters involving personnel and students must be heard in closed session. The superintendent will inform you whether your complaint is one which should be referred to an executive session with the board. By signing this roster before the meeting, you agree to abide by the rules. We have one speaker tonight, Angela Elliott?
Please be patient with me because I'm nervous, and hopefully by calling out that I'm nervous, I can get rid of those bugs. To be completely frank with you all, I have prepared an entire speech for tonight that I pretty much nixed at 2:00 this afternoon. There was a lot of information on it, but I think maybe coming at, coming from a standpoint from a heart, from my heart, sorry, excuse me, might spark a little bit more of a flame than, than what's going on right now. As you can see with our room, there's nobody except for employees here and a friend, thank you. I am here to talk about concerns that I have, a concern professionally and personally. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Angela Elliott. I am a School Resource Officer with Glen County School System. I am the District Investigator, as well as the Truancy Officer. I also conduct the fingerprints for the district. So I get to talk to a lot of people in our district, and I get to hear a lot of complaints, and I get to hear a lot of, what's the word I'm looking for, compliments. Recently, I was kind of caught off guard with a spotlight that we had on our social media page before Thanksgiving, and it was the Womexin of the Year. For those of you not familiar with what that word is post-COVID, woman is now considered a sexist term. So instead of saying woman, we say womexin as, it's supposed to be pronounced woman, it's spelled W-O-M-X-N, and that is to be more inclusive to the men who want to be women, whether they complete the procedure or just mentally identify as. I do not feel this has any part, any business being in an educational setting for multiple reasons, for medical reasons, for safety issues, a whole slew of them. However, what is more concerning is the fact that when I got on the post, because I was drawing attention to it, I was reading the comments, I didn't see what the issue was. At the time that I read the post, all the, all the women wherever used in the post was corrected to spell correctly. So reading the comments, people were mocking us, saying that we couldn't spell woman correctly, and there was one or two people that knew exactly what that word meant. I clicked on the link, and it brought up a grassroots organization who, who wants to promote diversity in our community, and great for adults, awesome. But as a district investigator, last year, I spent a lot of time investigating sex crimes, investigating cyberbullying, investigating crimes against children, whether it was from an alleged staff member or if it was from a parent from home. I got really personal with some of these children. Some of these children had to go through forensic interviews, all walks of life, every race background, every sexual orientation, all of it. There's, we are, we're introducing a topic that is very dangerous. Statistics show that children or youth between the ages of 13 and 17, since COVID, are twice as high when they identify as trans, but that diminishes by the time they're 25. So that speaks volumes on the impression that we have on these children. To deconstruct a woman, to me, fits in articulation that we are, it's a divisive content, you can't, you can't argue that it's not. I don't think it belongs in the school system whatsoever. There's many that agree with me, not that that matters, but what does matter is there's a policy black and white, and this is exactly why there is a trend across the United States of homeschooling, because we don't trust anybody with our children. And if I have an obligation to protect these children mentally and physically, I would expect the school district that I work for to do the exact same. I'm not saying you're not whatsoever, but we need to do better than spotlighting stuff other than the FBLA. That was awesome. That stuff makes sense. It does not make sense to spotlight something that's going to turn into a divisive issue. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. All right, from here, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Second. Motion by Mr. Holsey, a second by Ms. Gibbons. Any need for discussion on this? No? All those in favor of approving the agenda? It's unanimous? All right, I'll move forward with items to be placed on the consent agenda. So number seven, approval of the November 9, 2023 work session meeting minutes. Number eight, approval of the November 14, 2023 regular board meeting minutes. Nine C, the personnel report. Nine B, field trips. Nine C1, the GUD report. Nine D1, approval of the October financials report. Nine D2, approval of the RISLAX ANX intercom replacement. Nine D3, approval of the Dell Data Center Technical and Maintenance Support. Nine D4, approval of the maintenance vehicle purchase. Nine D5, approval of Glen Academy ANX building repairs change order. Nine D7, approval of the 2024 meeting dates. And Policy Committee E, we do have a policy change, a couple revisions that were introduced at our work session that need to sit on the table for 30 days, so they'll be brought up again at the January meeting, so I'll add that. All of the items were discussed in our work session last Thursday in depth. Does anybody have any additions or deletions to the consent agenda items?
I move to approve the consent agenda items I presented.
Motion by Mr. Edgy. Second. And a second by Ms. Gibbons. All those in favor of the consent agenda items? It's unanimous. Thank y'all. That leaves one item to discuss if you'd like. Nine D6, the approval of the St. Simon's Elementary Phase 5 gross maximum price. Mr. Blackerby presented that to us on Thursday, but if anybody has any questions or would like to review it again, we can do so now.
I approve.
Okay, motion by Mr. Holsey and a second by Ms. Gibbons. Anything further? All those in favor of approving St. Simon's Elementary gross maximum price for Phase 5? It's unanimous, sorry. Thank you. All right, that takes us to our executive session. I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session for personnel. Does anybody have any other reasons? No? All right, a second?
Personnel, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, for personnel and legal, so I'll amend the motion and second by Mr. Rodolph. Okay, all those in favor of entering into executive session?
Right.
It's unanimous at 6:25. It's unanimous at 6:25.